Okay, I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting of the Board of Directors Monterey Peninsula Water Management District for Monday, July 19, 2021, at 6:01. Can we have roll call, please?
Director Riley.
Here.
Director Malik.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Adams.
Here.
Director Roberson. Is absent. Vice Chair Paul.
Here.
Chair Edwards.
Here.
Let the record reflect that our directors are present with the exception of Director Roberson.
And he will join us after his meeting that he has. Okay, next item, pledge allegiance. May we all please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ready. Thank you. Our next item is any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Yes, there are a few. On the second page beneath oral communications, the word announcements is misspelled. Consent calendar, item number one, after the date, it should say regular board meeting. And item 11, in the recommended action section, similar to the actual title, it should say convert the hydrology technician position to an assistant hydrologist position. So those are just cleanups.
That's a good one. All right.
And thank you.
I move approval of the modifications.
One second.
Is that proper?
Yes, that's proper. We have a motion by Director Riley and a second by Director Adam. Roll call, please.
Director Roberson, absent. Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Aye.
The motion passes on a vote of six yeses, one absent.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the board.
Okay, next item is announcements. Gentlemen.
Yes, this is just a simple announcement that Heidi Quinn, who worked in the Law Office of Delay in Laredo and served the district for 15 years, has made a life change and moved on to new experiences. And we will miss her, and we just wanted to recognize her years of service. She has 25 years of experience in many aspects of California law, but 15 were spent working on a variety of projects for the district. And we very much enjoyed both her counsel and her friendship.
Thank you. Any comments from board members on her, on Heidi? Just one comment for me. We want to thank her again for her services. When Mr. Laredo hasn't been around for us, she was there for us. So I hope that he gets somebody else to continue on after her, and I think he has somebody, Fran Farina. So she's been working with the firm for a while. But thank you, Heidi, once again. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I will convey your thoughts to Heidi Quinn. Thank you.
I appreciate that, General Counsel. Okay, consent calendar. Nope, excuse me, I'm a little ahead. Oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar information, items, co-session items, or matters not listed on the agenda may do so through oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Out of order. Oral communications are now open.
So the Board of Directors welcomes your public comment during oral communications on matters not on today's agenda. If you would like to provide public input, please raise your hand via Zoom. And if you're calling in, please push star nine. When it is your turn, I will identify you by your name. If you are calling in, I will identify you by the last three digits of your phone number. At that time, you will need to push star six to unmute yourself, and you may identify yourself for the clerk's record. If you're joining us on your electronic device and are calling in, please lower your device volume to limit any feedback that may be transmitted via Zoom. Thank you. And at this time, just give it a couple of seconds here, Chair Edwards.
Okay, Joel, once you get that started, Mayor Roberson is on the other side.
Yes, I did get his email, and I'll move him over. All right, so at this time, let me go ahead and screen share. Just give me a second here. At this time, I would like to invite Anna Thompson in. Before I do that, directors, do you see the timer?
Yes, we do.
Please be patient with me here. Sarah? Let me connect the screen share. Anna, if you can, could you push a star six to unmute yourself? I'm not seeing an option for me to ask you to unmute.
I'll try it.
Sarah, could you do it?
Yes, I'll try it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I can hear. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry for the delay. I just want to express my unhappiness with Lafco's decision not to grant conditional approval of this district's latent powers based on the court's decision. There is no way another study is going to give any more accurate price than what the district's feasibility study has already determined. It's an all Lafco's job to decide if a buyout is in the public interest. In fact, the determination whether or not a buyout is feasible should not be based solely on the current price of the infrastructure, but it should consider all future savings and benefits the community ownership will provide us versus private ownership and monopoly at that. Due to Calham's past performance, I personally think we cannot afford to keep Calham at any price. What benefit has Calham provided so far or provided in the future that we couldn't get with community ownership? After more than 50 years of ownership of the water delivery system, Calham has provided no new water supply, the highest average water cost per household in the nation, and despite all the evidence to the contrary, continues to make the false claims that this D cell plant project is the only viable alternative to meet our future water needs, supply. Supply needs, basically. Calham has refused to do the cost benefit analysis comparing the D cell to the Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project, and also has refused to do any additional environmental requirements to see impact, to determine whether their D cell plant is feasible to consider new data. So if it's so sure that the cell plant is the best project, why has it refused to do the cost benefit analysis and provide the supplemental environmental report for data that has been, new data that has been coming forward? So I just wanted to say that, that my comment is that we wanted to proceed with the buyout of Calham at any cost. In my opinion, we have a lot to gain. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And Sarah, do we have anybody else that wishes to make public comment during oral communications?
Yes, we have Michael Bear.
All right, Michael, when you're ready, please present your comment. Michael, if you could.
Yeah, now I'm unmuted. I just want to clarify, isn't this an agenda item, the Lafco, what happened at Lafco? So don't we save that till item 12? This isn't the only opportunity to talk about Lafco. Am I correct in that?
You're correct.
Okay, so I will talk to you when that item comes up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, is there anybody else out there?
I see no other raised hands.
All right, with that, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Now we on consent calendar. Anyone wish anything pulled from the consent calendar? Any board member?
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
I have a couple corrections to the minutes of the June 21st meeting. Do we need to pull it from consent to make those corrections?
Yeah, pull it from consent. What's that number you want?
So that's the first item on the consent agenda.
All right, number one is pull.
Okay.
Any other board members want anything pulled from consent calendar? If not, Joel, could you please check with the public and see if they want anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a motion in a second? For the consent calendar?
I make a motion.
Okay, Director Merrick? Malik made the motion. I think Director Anderson had her hand up for the second. Okay, we're going to approve two, three, four, five, and six. Okay? Roll call vote, please.
Director Riley? Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
I think I said yes already.
Voting twice?
Yeah.
She's voting for George.
Where'd he go?
Director Riley?
Will we lose George?
He's opening an account at a public bank, I think.
I don't see him on the panelist's side there. Vice Chair Paul?
Yes, he just got back.
I vote yes.
Director Riley? This is to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of item number one, which Director Paul has pulled from the consent calendar.
He's muted.
I don't see him. Oh, here, there he is. George, you're muted.
Director Riley?
Still muted.
Sarah, can you unmute him?
I've been trying, now I cannot.
Okay, just.
Okay, let's move along.
All right, Chair Edwards?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes on a vote of six ayes and then one absent.
And I did not have an opportunity to vote, but they voted for me, so I vote aye.
Okay, I thought I heard a yes, Supervisor Adams.
Okay, we all right, Joel?
Yes, we're all right.
Okay.
The motion passes on a vote of six ayes and then one absent.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, number one, what's your changes?
So here, on page seven of the agenda packet, near the top, where the minutes are talking about the next public, it says the next public hearing of Lafco, actually will be on July 28th, and that I believe should have been June 28th. I think that's what was meant, that the Lafco meeting of June 28th. So that's the first correction, and then the second is on page nine of the agenda packet, in the middle of the page where the reference to Senator John Laird, his name is misspelled. The D at the end is missing. So let's correct that. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments on number one? Joel, just check with the public and make sure we don't have any one want to pull talk on number one.
All right, at this time, you may raise your hand, or if you're calling in, of course, star nine. So I'll give it a couple of seconds here. And Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay, let's have roll call vote, please.
Director Adams? I'm sorry. Director Roberson?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Next item, General Manager's report.
Thank you. You're with me. I think my mouse is starting to have a battery die. Isn't that, that would be typical. I'm going to screen share in just a second. There we go. Everybody can see this, I hope?
Yes.
So this is through June, so we have three more months left in the water year. And these are the two primary resources, and you can see that the river is below target to date. And the coastal subarea of the seaside groundwater basin is also below. And of course, Laguna Seca with a zero target is relatively impossible to stay below. But as Calham shifts away from pumping its Bishop wells, this should eventually come into alignment. Okay, so we do have a dying battery. How nice. Yeah, I've only got, what, four PowerPoints to give you tonight, so we'll work on that little issue. These are the other water projects. The one item of note here is that Pure Water Monterey has been doing the heavy lifting. That's why you saw the river and the seaside basin successfully under their target. And San City D cell since January has been averaging about 14 acre feet per month. The production from all sources for customer service, the key takeaway here is that we are 21 acre feet higher than last year. So as a measure of demand, I think you can just take that as if we are relatively even relative to last year. July and August are typically the peak months, so we'll keep our eye on what's going on in that case. On rainfall, you don't really need to hear me say we haven't had rain in a couple of months. Here's the rain gauge data. The flat red line underscores the fact that we've not had rain for basically two and a half months. On stream flow, we still did see some stream flow in June. We'll continue to see some in July and August. However, the river is now intermittent for a number of miles, and fish rescue's are in progress. And then I wanted to highlight how we're doing against historical norms. This is rainfall. The dashed orange line is the current water year to date. And you can see it's squarely in the critically dry statistical group, but not as bad as 1924. You can see it beginning October, November through December, we were actually at or worse than 1924. So the rains that we did get, albeit limited, pushed us over the top from being the worst on record. And then similarly with stream flow, we're in the dry, not critically dry area. But, you know, there's no disputing that this is stacking up to be one of the driest years on record. And with that, kind of hard to return anything without a working mouse. There we go. So that covers the status report on compliance. If you would like, I can go right into item eight, which is update on water supply projects. Not much to report there. You may have heard in the press or through other organization committee meetings, we are in negotiation with California American Water on a Pure Water Monterey Expansion Water Purchase Agreement, which is a positive signal that we should, as a community, be able to proceed with that project. On the base project, just an update on the deep injection well three and four schedule. Deep Injection Well Three is slated to come online in mid-December, and Deep Injection Well Four is slated to come online at the end of December. So we lost two to three weeks on Deep Injection Well Number One's schedule, but we gained a couple of months, two and a half months on Deep Injection Well Number Four's schedule. So that's a positive. There's been nothing new to report on the California American D cell application other than they've not pulled the application. It may be back with something at the Coastal Commission. And, you know, we're in that summertime period where there's no injection going on in ASR, but there is still in the ground about 1,200 acre feet. So although it was not a great year for injection to ASR, we've not had any extractions from ASR in the water year to date. And that concludes my report on item eight.
Okay, any board questions on item seven and eight? Director Ralph?
Yeah, GM, can you comment on the status of the Ford Ordeville Well Number Nine? Or does that come up later in the discussion tonight?
Yeah, it's not on tonight's discussion. We will have it on the Water Supply Planning Committee Agenda for its next meeting, I believe, which is August 3rd or 4th, right in that area. And then we'll take it through that committee before we make any other decisions. We've not had any communication with the water master on next steps, and also neither Marina Coast Water District. So, you know, the key one being possible cost sharing. But we will bring information through the committee before it gets back to the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, General Manager, I like our stages of water and rationing plan. Be presented to the board before it gets too bad, and people wonder why we haven't done it yet. So if we can get that ran through water demand, so we can get it on the schedule.
Yeah, we, yeah, just for clarification, we did present on the four stages of our conservation rationing plan two months ago, I believe it was, at the board level. But we've not taken any specific actions under that plan. We will be discussing that at the next Water Demand Committee meeting. More than likely, it will be dealing with voluntary conservation and increased water waste enforcement, but unlikely to extend past that. But we'll talk about that at Water Demand and then report out to the whole board.
Thank you. Thank you. Have no other questions from the board? General Manager Report Number Nine.
Yes, this is just a mid-year update. I think that the exhibit to the staff note kind of speaks for itself. There are a number of items that are in, you know, I guess, in progress or ongoing. There are a few items that spin off of other entity schedules like Lafco and so forth. But generally speaking, we're in process on almost all, but there's a couple where we've not yet directly addressed. Now, that being said, there's one in there, item one, the long-term objectives for developing a plan to maximize ASR storage in a post-CDO world. We actually are now, I think we have a meeting tomorrow or later this week. Maureen Hamilton let me know that we're starting to look at the long-term needs for both Pure Water Monterey and ASR and that whole kind of geographic vicinity. So making some progress there. The, you know, the only things that haven't been touched year-to-date is developing a sustainability plan for the district, which was under goal number six as a long-term objective. But other than that, you know, I think we're in relatively good shape. We will be renewing the relationship with Dr. Richard Garcia for evaluating your general manager by the end of the calendar year. That will include kind of taking, again, a measure of our success on these strategic goals, keeping in mind that we did adopt these in April, so some of them have said, may have said, within a year, we may or may not be complete, but we may be on the path. But generally speaking, you know, of the six goals that you adopted with the sub-objectives, we're making progress on everything despite the fact that we've remained kind of sheltered in place. So no complaints here, but I'm willing to take any questions on these goals and objectives.
Any board question? Okay, Vice Chair, have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. On goal number one, the water supply, long-term objectives, number C, updating the water supply and demand study. And in the column to the right, the status column, it says no new data, but just to clarify, it was only a few months ago, if I remember correctly, that we updated that study to include the latest data from.
Ambach growth forecast.
Yeah, so I just wanted that to be clear to everyone.
That's a good point. I'll have to check dates, which one happened first, but, yep.
And then on the second goal, I have a question. I think this may be for our General Counsel. The near-term objectives of holding a hearing of public necessity. Can we proceed with that if we are ready? If Lafco is still deliberating and still considering our application, can we, if we are otherwise ready, can we go ahead with that hearing of public necessity?
If I may, through the chair, I believe we could proceed, but the uncertainties that would come from the application of Lafco, the exercising of our latent powers, I think would have so many unanswered questions that we would not be able to complete that. unanswered questions that we would not be able to complete that process. So if you started, I believe that that means that you would end up having two hearings and you would not be able to complete your your effort.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other board questions? Okay, no other questions from the General Managers Report? Okay, let's move to a report from District Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no closed session this evening. But there was a special meeting on Friday, July sixteenth, that was dedicated exclusively to the closed session matters. There were five items on the agenda, three items of named pending litigation and two items of threatened litigation. As to all five items, the your staff and general counsel provided a background status report to the board. The board did provide general direction as to the matters, but there was no specific reportable action that was taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you, General Counsel. Any questions to the General Counsel? If none, okay, next item will be Director's Report. On A B one, two, three, four, reports on trips, conferences, and attendance and meetings. Any board members? Go ahead, Director Anderson.
Yes, I signed up with Joel's help to attend for regional reports for the Association of California Water Agencies. And the first one was last month. It was quite interesting. It was called How Well-Managed Water Supplies Went Dry. It was a pretty, what do I want to say? It was very interesting to hear. It was about the Mendocino County Russian River. The water system, different parts of the Russian River and how insecure that their water sources were. And how little they seem to know about the process, that you couldn't just hire somebody to run a pipe and go grab some water somewhere. But it was it was very interesting. So I I enjoyed that. Seeing a little bit of what goes on at ACWA. I was glad we were not in their shoes.
Okay, is that the end of your report?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's a good report. Director Riley, go ahead.
Just a quick one. I'm I'm on the Water Master Board, and they just keep canceling their meeting, so there has not been a meeting in the last few months. Anyway, that that that's disturbing to me. But anyway, I just
I I I think it's because of you, Director Riley, but you asking questions. All right. Any other comments? Okay, I don't have, I just have one. I want to thank Monterey One Board last month for approving the expansion project, project, SEIR. I want to really thank them, and I think we're moving forward on that. There's a little bit to go, but I think the General Manager and General Counsel are doing an excellent job of keeping us informed. So thank you again, Monterey One Water. Okay, that's all I have on that. Next item will be action item, General Managers, all yours.
Thank you. This is item eleven. I'll turn over to John Lear for description. And Suresh, you should be prepared to talk about range and salary.
Yes, thanks, Dave. Directors. This is the conversion of a position from a hydro tech position to a position that is a hydrologist position that has a career ladder. We had a employee leave that was that held the hydrologist technician position during COVID. And at that time, the Water Resources Division pulled together. We got the work done that we needed to get done, but we accomplished that by sliding some of our end dates out. People of different completing tasks, you know, just sharing tasks in ways that we had higher level position work, doing some lower level position work. But what it did do is it allowed us to cross-train each other and 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 understand the duties of all of the other people working within the Water Resources Division. It did point out the fact that we will need to pull together and as we move forward and looking future forward, will want to have a highly competent cross-train staff by taking this position as a hydro tech position and converting it to hydrologist position, we will be able to train, attract a person that will be able to fill this position and will be able to train underneath the workers that are currently have twenty-five plus and thirty-five plus years experience. Have them come up underneath them, learn the skills and learn the different aspects of the different functions of the water water supply division and the different seasonalities of the different work and be able to have a workforce that is adaptive to both droughts when we catch up on a lot of our work and rainy seasons where we're monitoring a lot and operating water resources programs. So moving forward, we would like to bring this person in, train them up, and then prepare as we move towards the future of staffing of the division, looking forward and trying to attract people that we can keep and rise up through the ranks and keep for a long, a long period of time.
Okay, any more questions? Have no more questions. I just have one. Hey, did we talk about this in budget or did it just come up?
Suresh, can you really grab on? Yeah. Okay. As I said, Director, it was the position was budgeted at range twenty-two, which was the old position that had vacated. And that's why we are showing that thirty-five hundred dollar impact to the budget is basically due to hiring the new individual at range thirty.
Okay, any other questions? If not, Joel, let's see if anyone in the public, oh, excuse me, Director Adams have a question.
Thank you. It's actually not a question, just a comment. And it's just that I really appreciate the staff's looking forward. I think it's just terrific to have a succession plan in place. And looking out five years is really is really good. So I just very much appreciate the transition blueprint that that you guys are working on. I think it's really in all of our best interests. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board questions before we open up to the public? Okay, Joel, let's open it up to the public.
If you would like to make public comment on item number eleven, please raise your hand via Zoom or if you're calling in. I request star nine and Director Edwards. I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
That's good. Okay, can we get a motion in a sec?
I'd like to, I'll make a motion for approval.
And I will directly in a second by. Okay, Director Adams, you got it.
Under discussion, I would agree very much with Supervisor, my good friend Mary Adams, that I I'm always pleased in the city when we can get people really train them and promote them. Hans Usler, our city manager, is a good example of having twenty-four years with the city. And it's it's so good to have in-house people that you know that can move up the ranks. I think this is exciting.
Okay, any more comments under discussion? Go ahead, Director Riley.
No, just very quickly, I just think we ought to remember this when we were evaluating the GM about building a team.
All right, Director Riley, trying to get points for the GM on this.
He's on the payroll.
Okay, any other under discussion? Okay, Joel, roll call vote, please.
Director Adams.
I.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Roberson.
Yes.
Director Riley.
I.
Director Malik.
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, GM.
Yes, this is item twelve. And speaking of giving points, Joel deserves some points because somehow during this meeting, he secretly went from his chair where you see him to up here with a battery for my mouse and everything's all better now.
You know, Dave, we were going to take past the collection hat around to buy you a new battery because it seems to be quite an obstacle.
Funny, well, and I rifled all my drawers and couldn't find one that matched. So so this letter is a proposed letter to the Coastal Commission is to officially reiterate some information that's already been shared. And that maybe the water community locally has moved a little bit past. But back in August of twenty twenty, the seaside groundwater basin watermaster sent a letter to the Coastal Commission saying that the D cell plant was the only possible supplemental water project that could provide protective water levels in the seaside basin. Now, I will admit to you that we that there is no great plan in place for protective water levels, but the discussion has been started. And so we felt compelled in April to examine what benefit pure water Monterey expansion could provide, and it was substantial, as evidenced in the attachment to the proposed draft letter. And that committee meeting information was made public, but this letter would, in effect, formally transmit that information to the Coastal Commission, just so its record is complete. Now, since that time, as I mentioned, the local water community has changed a little bit, and we are meeting tomorrow at the right time of eight AM with Monterey One Water, the Water Master, and California American to talk about protective water levels. So I think that there is a little bit more openness now to recognize that both projects, D cell and pure water expansion, could provide protective water levels. All of this while keeping in mind that there's no infrastructure plan or funding plan really put in place, but we are beginning the discussion. The proposed letter, as I mentioned, is just to formally establish the record with the Coastal Commission. Should there be a resubmital of the application for the D cell project?
Thank you. Any more questions at this time? Go ahead, Director Riley.
Dave, it's been an issue for some time with me about the Water Master not having any plans for financing anything going forward. I mean, anything. I don't mean anything little. I just mean anything. And anyway, my my question is, I would like to see the letter right before the little graph at the end, at the end of the first page. I'd like to see a little phrase that said something like Cal Am has a current allocation of X. They're going to in lieu recharge for Y, and that leaves the Z in the calculations, something like. I just want to make, but the part of the reasons I want to say that is that the the letter from the Water Master that's dated in May of twenty twenty-one is different substantially, well, not only substantially different, but somewhat different than the letter they sent a year earlier to the Coastal Commission.
Right.
And that's when they said that the D cell is the only option. And then in this letter for last for last recently in May, they said that pure water Monterey is an option, but it's got limits.
Right.
And 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 I understand that. But my, here's my point. They sent their letter to Chris Cook and Shudo and others, their their letter in in May. I think our letter ought to go to the same parties so that they know what we're doing. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
With 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 a slight edit around these seven hundred and seven seventy-four.
Yeah, we'll we'll do. You know, there may letters what precipitated are meeting tomorrow. I did get your suggestion on the seven hundred acre feet. I think it's a good one. And also the that little table, the the headers were supposed to be in white print, so they show up better. So that'll get changed as well.
Okay, any other questions? Vice Chair.
Just a brief comment that the the attachment showing the calculations that you made to to calculate the excess water availability over time, that that's based on the updated supply and demand study that we talked about a moment ago.
It is. You are correct. Yes.
Okay, any other questions out there? If no questions, let's open up to the public.
Yes, so if you would like to if you would like to make a comment on item number twelve, please raise your hand via Zoom or if you're calling in, I'll put star nine. So at this time, I do see here Chair Edwards that we do have members of the public that wish to make public comment. So let me go ahead and share my screen. And directors, please let me know if you can see the timer here.
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, Michael Bear, he may present your comment.
Hi. So I'm I'm curious, just for the name, excuse me, the name of it being protective water rights, you're in the Coastal Commission, and so and and the Water Master, and, you know, I have to confess, I didn't I didn't read the draft letter, so I'm a little in the dark. But my question or my curiosity is around one of the issues that's come up with the Coastal Commission, and I think was based on a lot of reporting from Marina Coast, is this idea of vernal ponds. You see one when you drive north on Highway one in Marina, and there are about seven vernal ponds, you know, free standing water bird habitat, which the testing showed or the reporting was that the modeling, these these bodies might be threatened. You know, if the water goes away, the birds are going to go away. And so that was, you know, that was a concern. It's one of the obstacles that Cal Am has yet to really address. And all of this water, groundwater and these vernal ponds are all within the same, you know, basically five square mile area or eight square mile area. And and so I'm wondering if that issue that the Coastal Commission is concerned about is addressed in any way in this letter, you know, the idea if the groundwater drops, and this is what, you know, water preservation is about, groundwater preservation. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite Susan Scialoni. When you're ready, Susan, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. I just want to thank you for doing the analysis and bringing this up to date for the Coastal Commission. I think it's really important that the state for the record that pure water Monterey has that capacity to meet the needs for safe water levels, protective water levels for the seaside basin. It's really important that the commission have the facts, and I'm glad you've updated that so that it's more current. And I'm also sharing the concern that the Water Master does not have regular meetings. I've been trying to attend them, and I agree with Mr. Riley or Director Riley that, you know, I don't, this has been three meetings they canceled. I know a developer was supposed to be preparing a report on a well he was supposed to destroy within sixty days. I don't know if that sixty days has gone by, but no one has met. I don't know what their regulations are, but it seems to me that they put out a lot of need and concern, but now they're not meeting to talk about it. So I don't know. That's something I I'm concerned with as well. So I think the narratives are floating around about, you know, pro Cal Am versus, you know, there's still a push for the there's still a push for the D cell, I understand that, but I'm very happy that you've given facts to the record for the Coastal Commission in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, we still have two more, um, members who want to make public comment. So when you're ready, James, uh, go ahead and present your public comment.
Yeah, actually, Eric. Yep. How you doing, Dave? This is Eric Tynan with Casterville, I'm the Water General Manager for Casterville. Just want to note a few things is, a lot of people seem, they don't, they forget that the idea of the tri, the tri area, try supply for the, the D cell, the pure water and recycled water was all supposed to be put together. All that water for the pure water is coming, still, most of it's coming from the Slade's Valley. Whether it's rainwater, storm water, or wash water, ditch water, it started out as groundwater in the Slade's Valley. And right now, the whole project sounds like, you know, yeah, you do the expansion, but Carmel sends its wastewater from Pebble Beach, and Casterville ends up taking on affordable housing. And so, and Marina's wells, by the way, their depots are 100 feet deep, their static is 100 feet lower than Casterville. So you gotta wonder what the heck the people in Slade's Valley are thinking when they're pushing for this expansion. I'm all for every drop of water being used, but there doesn't seem like there's much benefit to the people of the valley other than getting affordable housing parked on top of them because they say, everybody says they don't have enough water. So I think the D cell's a good idea. You gotta, you gotta drought right now, you don't know how long it's gonna last. You're gonna stop, the rivers are gonna, you're gonna stop releasing, the dams rather, they're gonna stop releasing on the 22nd. I just give it, I would give it a serious thought, I think, uh, when, uh, your district was in favor of it, and it seemed like it was a done deal, we'd be through with all this right now. Um, but it seems like in 25 years of people using water to control growth, and I think they're still doing it. Anyways, I appreciate all the hard work you do, and I don't mean to be negative about it, but I think, uh, we're gonna be in a serious situation as this goes on another year, and might wish you had done these, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, at this time, I would like to invite John Tilly. When you're ready, please present your comment, John.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, board members and staff. Earlier in this evening, we saw the discussion of water supply, and ASR was at zero. It's not raining anymore, and, uh, I think that, you know, planning for rain to happen is, um, gonna be a, a bad road to go down. Furthermore, when we get into a drought situation, people use less water. It'd be great to see both Phase One and Phase Two of Pure Water Monterey achieve their goals. Definitely would be great to see that, uh, but as drought happens, people flush less, people use less, conserve, and we've already conserved a lot here. So, um, if there's gonna be source water for that, it's good. If there's not, that's something that may be a drought impact as well. Um, I think that improving this letter to go to, uh, to, to be sent by the district, including the full ASR, is something that should be discussed by every board member here tonight, uh, if that number is a number that's, uh, valid. And if those are really the facts, it seems to me the facts are more that we're at a very limited ASR type number. And in that consideration, I would like to say that it's good to hear that there can be a discussion around alternatives, uh, if it doesn't rain here. I think that should be a, a serious consideration of this board to not just pursue certain goals that are already in place, but to take on the very long-term, serious, important elementary task of supplying water should there not be rain here in the next 10 years. That, that's what I expect to have happen. I think it's plan, uh, planning for the worst, which is something that should be, uh, taken seriously and hope for the best, but praying for rain is not a good route to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I would like to invite Melody Chrislock. So when you're ready, Melody, uh, please present your comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the record and remind everyone that, um, the water that went to the CSIP program for 20 years, 40% of that came from the peninsula. So when Mr. Tynan starts talking about how, oh my God, you know, we're taking, they don't give water, Carmel and Carmel Valley don't, but the rest of the peninsula do, and a lot of that water has gone to Casterville's area. So just take that in consideration, please, in the future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return us back to the board.
Thank you. Public comment is closed. Okay, questions from the board? Uh, Director Malik, did you have your hand up?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. Just checking. Okay, Director Row.
Um, I, I'm, I'm in support of the letter, and I'm, I'm not sure if I want to make a motion yet, but I would like, uh, to confirm that, uh, there's a modification of the third paragraph to clarify, uh, the Cal Am numbers, uh, between 17, 1474 and the others. And the CC, um, to the other parties to make sure they all, who got the original letter, get this letter as well. Uh, but anyway, that, that's what I want to see is a modification. I, I would move, uh, support of the letter or approval of the letter with those modifications.
Oh, okay, I think. Director Malik, you wanted to give a second on that? I think you wanted to make the motion.
Sure, thank you. I make a motion to approve the letter.
Well, uh, a motion already been made to approve it. I, I want to get you on a second.
Second.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, now we can have a discussion. Okay, uh, Director Anderson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I have a question for, uh, Director Riley. Would you clarify the numbers that you're talking about? I, it was a little too quick for me to pick that up. I know you want to change be, uh, after the second paragraph. What?
Yeah, let me do that, if, if I may.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, what he's talking about is down in the third paragraph, right before the little table.
Uh huh.
It says, taking into consideration Cal Am's 700 acre feet in lieu recharge. And he's suggesting a little more information would be helpful. Cal Am basically has a permanent right to 1,474 acre feet after the last triennial reduction or step down. What they've chosen to do when a new water supply comes online, be it D cell or Pure Water Monterey Expansion, their goal is to take 700 acre feet a year and not pump it from their, their right, if you will, on the seaside basin, so for, for a 25-year period. So what that does is it allows recharge, assuming the averages, and of course, Mr. Tilly and others have said, you know, what if the averages don't continue with climate change? But the theory is, if you've got a right to 14, to 1474, but you choose not to pump 700, then you're really only counting on 774 as the table shows. So what Director Riley wants is just a little clearer explanation of, uh, that program and how they all interrelate.
Thank you. Okay. Under discussion, uh, General Manager, do you think, since you're having a meeting tomorrow with, with the Cal Am, um, Seaside Basin Committee and others, do you want to delay this letter until you have that meeting?
No. No, I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to delay that. Changes as suggested are minor. I've already got eight copies of this version to bring to that meeting tomorrow anyway, so I was a little bit ahead of you, but, um, they're also fully aware of this issue because, uh, company attendees were on the April 5th Water Supply Planning Committee meeting. And I, you know, maybe the Water Master did not see that staff report, but I, I'm under the assumption that they had, but either way, with these minor changes, it'll be ready to go, and we'll share it with them, uh, in that form.
Thank you. And just on a second, I appreciate you getting this on the agenda. I like to be as transparent as we can, and I think that's what we're doing by sending this letter up to the Coastal Commission, so it won't be no mix-up that we're doing something behind somebody's back. So I appreciate the board's support on this letter. Okay, um, if no other comments? Oh, all right, Vice Chair, I see your hand up.
I'd just like to add to what, I agree with what you just said, Chair Edwards. I'd just like to add that I, I think there's at least one new Coastal Commissioner, so this will, this sending this letter will get the attention of people who may not have been following the long history of this D cell application, and that's, that's another plus. It's a good letter.
Thank you, Vice Chair. If no other, go ahead, Derek, Director Adams.
With that comment, excuse me, with that comment in mind particularly, since the new Coastal Commissioner might not have as much information or background, are we putting ourselves in any kind of a situation where we are not as clear as we should be about why there may be differing, different, um, opinions as to, uh, or different assumptions, I guess, uh, about the water that we will have available to us? Is there, are we making any kind of nod to that, or, you know, is that anything we should be conscious of or worried about?
Well, we should definitely be conscious and worry about it because in this long, tawdry tale of trying to get through the Coastal Commission, so much of the rhetoric, centered around who's facts are right and whose facts are wrong. This is done at a level, just trying to say, hey, there's an alternative set of facts that you didn't have in this letter you got a year ago. And I would imagine it's, it's more from, from our standpoint to inoculate ourselves from not having made those facts formally available. But I don't think it's gonna resolve the, you know, the long tale of who, you know, who's right and who's wrong. And if an application goes through and it's deemed complete and it gets a hearing, um, this is, you're squarely back to whether the commissioners want to ask any questions, uh, if the staff report is complete or incomplete or what have you. I don't know how to address that really at this point.
Okay, uh, Director Riley.
But I also think this letter puts us in the, uh, in the strongest position to be an active, uh, participant in the, in the proceedings. It presents the facts that are, uh, we, we can back up. It presents an update to an issue that was raised a year ago, but now this is an update to say that, that year ago data from the Water Master was not entirely accurate, and this presents the newer information, more recent information. And I, I, you know, to the extent that they're gonna take it under consideration, I have no idea, but we're doing what we can, and I, and I, I support that.
Okay, if no other comments, roll call vote, please.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pa?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Damn, please.
Yeah, and point of clarification to Mr. Bear's public comment, um, this letter does not address any of the vernal pools issues, which are separate, uh, and geographically differently located than this particular issue. But this letter does address Mr. Tilly's issue about aquifer storage and recovery in the second to last paragraphs. Just want to pass that along. So the next item is, uh, newly added item 12.1, uh, which moved kind of the, uh, the process from discussion to talk about Measure J, Rule 19.8, from just discussion to action because there's gonna be a, a cost element, uh, in here. So we'll do a little bit of both, uh, talking about where we're at, where we're going, and then, uh, call for the, the financial question. So, sharing screen. Okay, everybody, so this is consider approval of additional Measure J cost, but it'll take a circuitous route to get to that. So just a reminder to everyone what the whole Measure J Rule 19.8 is all about. It's about acquiring the Monterey Water System assets, California American. Really what that means is these assets within the district territory, the Cal Am Maine, Ryan Ranch, Bishop and Hidden Hills Systems, the Monterey Pipeline, uh, all the ASR wells, and the, the D cell transmission main that's within our jurisdiction. But there are some assets outside the district territory that, under our interpretation of the code, uh, covering, uh, condemnation, because they benefit directly and are built specifically for the benefit of, uh, service area, who would include the desalination plant as proposed, the D cell pipeline, Casterville Pipeline, and the D cell transmission main, uh, portion that's outside of the, the district's jurisdictional boundary. So it's the assets that are there to serve the Monterey Peninsula Water System, uh, customers. Recall that this whole effort is a three-phase process. We're kind of in between these two right now, feasibility analysis, which was performed and presented in November of 2019. And we've subsequently taken, uh, a variety of issues up, not the least of which is, uh, activation of latent powers with LAFCO that need to be done before going to the right-to-take bench trial, also when there would be, uh, a municipal rate study, um, a formal appraisal, which, uh, we were underway with, uh, and so forth. And then if the judge determines that there is a right to take, then it moves on to the valuation jury trial. So principal conclusions to date, and if you take the following four measures together, uh, we believe even as of right now, it's likely in the public interest to acquire the system, um, satisfying the feasible, uh, part of the, uh, actual measure. Cost to ratepayers, so the feasibility study showed the system to be less costly to operate with annual cost savings, uh, including acquisition costs, a certain amount of severance costs, and the assumption of some existing at that time outstanding debt. Quality of service and, uh, delivery of service, the operations plans have shown that the district, uh, especially under an integrated operating plan, but certainly with a third-party operator, can provide operations in a similar or better manner, and quality in a similar or better manner. Governance, uh, I think we've come to, uh, understand that in the public's minds, public ownership can result in greater local control and oversight and participation. And then legally permissible, there's several factors that go into this, but as of right now, I just wanted to highlight the Willett Pass muster with LAFCO. So in addition to the annexation of the 58 parcels, it's, uh, the activation of latent powers. Now, this was the schedule that was envisioned last year. So we moved on from the feasibility study, and we moved headlong into drafting the findings for a resolution of public necessity, and developing a formal appraisal, uh, and review of rates, and looking at the low-income ratepayer assistance program. And we also hired a real estate appraiser to work, and so an MAI appraiser, just on the real estate, to work with the enterprise fund appraiser who's working on the formal valuation, and everything was set to kind of, uh, culminate in October roughly, um, of last year. We did the integrated operations plans, the contract operation plan, those were included in the application to LAFCO. And then we also did a SEQA analysis. But what happened on or about October were really kind of three, three things, and, and then some. We were slightly slow to, uh, certify the EIR, it was ready in September, we put it on, on our October board meeting. on, on our October board meeting, and then that agenda got so long, we shifted it to even two more weeks later, to a special meeting in October 29. At the same time, there were threats on the sequel work, threat of a lawsuit, which ultimately was filed. I believe there was a notice of intent to sue right about this time. And there was allegation by the Calam attorneys that the operations plans absolutely indicated changes in operations that should have been evaluated in sequoia, to which we said that was not our intent whatsoever. So the board decided to accept the operations plans, subject to some rework, that would clearly state that any suggestion that there's a difference in operations over the first year of ownership was unintended. So reworking those operations plans lost us, you know, a little bit of time as well. And we intended to file a complete application with Lafco in December, right before the holiday. Interestingly, we did adopt our resolution to file with Lafco in July. The attorneys for Calam raised a bunch of issues with our resolution. So we, well, no, excuse me, at that time, we discovered that we had misnoticed it. So we brought it back in August or September, which didn't cost us a whole lot of time, but it was just one more item that had to be redone. Then the Calam attorneys raised all sorts of issues, even with the, the re-adopted or the re-noticed resolution. And that led to some time delays as we redid it. And you may recall, we just adopted that revised Lafco resolution just a couple of months ago. So we started to lose time as we got into the threats of litigation and Lafco desiring additional information. Now, that didn't stop us from continuing this work, and this work has cost us, you know, quite a bit of money. Where we're at right now, we, in both the original phase and the current phase, we still have eminent domain legal counsel. In the first phase, we had investment bankers supporting the cost of service study. The valuation cost of service study was first phase, but it's the same folks who are providing valuation services and rate work to us in the second phase, with the addition of the MAI real estate appraiser. Utility operations consultants, we've had one individual in both phases, and we added the third-party consulting firm in the second phase. The secret consultants was a decision to do after financial feasibility was proven, so that's all second phase. Then Lafco expenses are presently, we, we did, we discussed authorizing some expenditures for staff time, but we've been carrying all the Lafco expenditures in contingency and miscellaneous to date. I've broken it out and moved it back out. I'll work with Suresh to keep it out, because what we're looking at now in Lafco are the third-party independent review that's been discussed, and we'll talk a little bit more about, as well as our property tax consultant. You, as a board, authorized up to 55,000 for the property tax consultant, and we'll be talking about authorization for third-party reviews. So I think we're going to need to move Lafco out of here, which I've done, and move it up in here. District legal counsel has been a line item in all phases. Sequel litigation legal services was something we added during the second phase because of the filing of litigation at the, you know, shortly thereafter of certification of the EIR. And then contingency and miscellaneous. And the reason that's so high as authorized was we originally carried a very high number on the secret consultants. So we took all the savings from what was authorized by the board for that and just moved it down into contingency. All told, we've authorized just over 2 million, you know, 2.1 million, and we've expended almost 1.6 million. And then obviously, we're going to need to reload on legal counsel because all of the findings and polishing that work is going to fall somewhat into that area. We still have budget for valuation. And we will be expending for Lafco, so as I said, we'll move some monies from contingency up into there and create a contract amount, just so we can kind of keep better track of it. Where we're at now with the Lafco process, we submitted our last item that was noticed as incomplete on July 12. And keep in mind that, you know, we had a workshop at the end of April, and then a workshop at the end of June. Very little happened in that interim period in terms of commissioners asking pointed questions or asking for data. The only things that happened were Lafco staff issued their notice of incomplete and asked for additional information, some of which may not have really genuinely been incomplete. But certainly, we respect their desire to know more or get better information. So we did that. Once they give us a notice of completion, they need to schedule a public hearing within 90 days, because it's apparent that they don't want to have that public hearing until the October 25 regularly scheduled meeting. They would not want to notify us before July 27. I no longer think they would just be dragging their feet on this. I think I understand that they've taken the property tax analysis and asked the county auditor controller to review it on their behalf, and that would just take time anyway. So chances are, they won't receive that information prior to July 27. So the dates will work out. If there's a continuation, or if there's additional information required or requested, their last regularly scheduled meeting is December 6. And they've indicated that they prefer to do what they can do during regularly scheduled meetings. So that's the schedule we're looking at. To Director Paul's earlier question, if we adopt a resolution of public necessity, we're in effect turning around shortly thereafter and filing the condemnation action in the courts. And the concern that we have is we'll never get through the courts if we can't represent that we have permission to activate our latent powers. So it, you know, it still is pretty much that we're hung up on Lafco approving our application before we can take a further action. They have decided on a firm to go out and do an independent review. It's this Burks and Associates, an urban economist, someone who should be capable of reviewing all of the material received to date. Their budget is 50,000 plus 20,000 in contingency. And the question for us tonight is, will the district authorize up to 70,000? And I believe that the revised agenda does state the recommendation correctly. Will the board, the board will consider authorizing staff to spend 70,000 per annum, 50,000 plus 20,000 in contingencies in support of Lafco's third-party review.
Okay, more questions. Director Riley, have his hand up. Go ahead.
Dave, can you expand a little bit more on what you think Lafco is asking of Burks and Associates?
Yeah, so I don't really know. Our only contact has been to exchange contact information. I think we all agree that a third-party appraisal, now keep in mind, the attorneys for Calam have said, ours is a genuine appraisal, yours is just a value. And what they forget is that they've appraised in their official appraisal assets that don't even exist yet. So theirs is not an official appraisal. Theirs was a campaign piece that set a very high number. Our official valuation, it's been lost on people that included the assumption of debt, which means that the acquisition price is actually higher than what we put in there. So my expectation is this individual, or I don't know if he's partnering with anyone, will review all the material available and submitted to date, both from Calam and from us, and make a determination whether the methodology was appropriate and accurate, whether the results are reasonable given the assumptions, whether the assumptions are reasonable. I would expect this person to do a lot of the reading that the Lafco commissioners failed to do, to fill in some of the blanks, and then make a determination if in fact, and this is where the, you know, the Lafco review really does have some teeth, they want to make sure that this public agency can provide the services at a reasonable cost to the ratepayers, and that we have the resources to provide these services. Now, I personally believe that was a very easy equation to solve, because if the goal is to integrate Calam's existing workforce, they should be able to provide the exact same services for the exact same rates and the exact same revenues. So that's almost a no-brainer if you just bring that over from one owner to another owner. Now, our cost of service analysis shows that it would be more affordable on a cost of service basis due to a variety of assumptions and so forth. So we would expect the consultant to also look at that. But giving them some comfort, them being Lafco and their commissioners, that they've adequately reviewed our ability to provide services and have the revenues in order to support provision of those services would be an important conclusion.
Director Malik?
Go ahead. When, I'm assuming that this consultant had been selected by Lafco without our input and without our consent?
Correct. And I, I think where we are at is if we did not consent to the expenditure of funds or the reimbursement, they would not activate the contract, and everybody would just stand still for a period of time. And, you know, I think we talked a little bit about that before. So it's definitely was done without our input, which is probably a good thing. I, you know, I thought we hired a third-party to do our analysis. I think we all thought we did. We hired one of the best teams and said, come back and tell us what you learned, not, you know, borrow my watch to tell me what time it is. This is their third-party consult.
Okay, go ahead, Director Malik, and then Director Adams. Go ahead.
Typically, when there is a dispute between two parties, a third party is supposed to be a neutral, independent party that either both opposing, opposing entities agree on, or, or that will be a biased opinion. And I would like to ask Mr. Loredo to comment on that, because when you go into mediations, it is a similar situation. And unless the two parties agree that yes, this consultant is qualified by both parties, then that does not make any sense to have one party that seems to be in unfriendly attitude towards the water district, is selecting their own consultant. And I don't know if, if Turner manager or anyone on staff had verified who this consultant is, and what qualifications do they have, and whether we feel comfortable spending $70,000 of ratepayers' money on something that we don't know anything about.
If I may, Mr. Chair, this is directed to me. There are two parties in this proceeding, California American Water Company and the Water Management District. Lafco, in this instance, is not a separate party. Lafco is the decision-maker. And as the decision-maker, Lafco is within, it's acting within its rights to select an independent fact-finder. And that, I believe, is what they've done. If there, there's not a need for a further arbitrator or decision-maker, Lafco has the responsibility under the law to act on this based upon facts. They have the prerogative to make this request, but there should not be, a true independent is one that would be selected by the decision-maker.
Question?
Okay, Director Malik, I'll come back to you. Director Adams, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My questions are along the same line. And Dave, I'm just wondering, when we were going out and seeking someone who would do the appraisal from us, you know, from our perspective, did we come across Burks and Associates? Are we familiar with them?
No, they, based on their, their body of work, they do a lot of work for Lafco's, municipal services review, financial analyses, a variety of things that would probably touch on utility rate setting as well. But they're not a rate study firm, they're not an appraisal firm, they're not a cost of service study firm. And these are, you know, in the, in the utility industry, those are pretty well-known quantities. You know, who, who can model how a utility operates? And what are all those component elements of cost? And then once you see what all those component elements add up to, okay, how do I get that every year? How do I break that into my rates? So you see a lot of cost of service companies who also do rate studies. What we have in our case is, we also have experienced enterprise appraiser, and then we added the real estate appraisal element to that. So the, I detect that Burks is primarily a sole practitioner who has partnered with other firms, but that may not be the case. He may have associates. But their, their type of work is nowhere near the magnitude of trying to value a large-scale utility system, figure out what the impact on cost of service would be, whether it's cheaper or more expensive, and how that might translate to rates. It's just not within their, their wheelhouse. So all we can hope for here is that they can review it and speak to the methodology, speak to the assumptions, and make some sweeping conclusions about whether it looks like it should be in the ballpark. But we don't, we don't really have control that, you know, as Director Malik's pointed out, you know, we're, we're accepting somebody picked by others with skills not vetted by ourselves and agreeing to spend an awful lot of constituents' money for information we felt we've already answered every question on.
Okay. Finally, are they based in Sacramento?
San Francisco.
Thank you. Thanks very much for your answers.
Thank you. Director Malik, you have another question?
Yes. As Council Loredo indicated, that the two parties involved are Calam and the water district. Why is a water district bear the brunt of $70,000? And why is that not shared equally between the two parties, meaning Calam and water district?
The district is the applicant before Lafco. Calam is a party in the sense that it is their property that eventually would be appraised and either negotiated or the subject of an eminent domain proceeding. Technically, this is not a multi-party proceeding. Technically, this is the application of the district to Lafco for our powers to be allowed to be exercised. So Calam is not subject to the fee structure of Lafco. And if it were not paid, if it needs to be paid, And, uh, if it were not paid, if it needs to be paid, it would be the district alone that would be paying it.
Yeah, and, and if I could just add, you know, the way LAFCOs are funded is a very interesting, uh, framework. They're funded primarily from fees collected from their independent special districts, their cities, and the county. So their budget for the current year is just a little bit over a million dollars. And that's a third from the county. Let's see, uh, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen. And then from the city contributions, the same, and the independent special district contributions, the same. Thankfully, in our case, we don't make contributions because, because we're not considered an independent special district because of the existence of the mayor and a supervisor on our board. Otherwise, we'd be contributing in, in two separate convocations to the same end. But the, so the fact of the matter is, they also rely on what are called, uh, project fees and pass-through fees. These numbers have been relatively small in each annual budget for the last three years. Currently, you know, like ten thousand dollars. Well, we've already contributed, uh, seventy-two hundred dollars as pass-through fees or, uh, project fees. You authorize another, I believe it was up to seventy, might have been eighty thousand, of which thirty-nine thousand has already been, uh, forwarded to them. So now this becomes over and above and on top. Now, C- uh, Council, uh, Laredo did indicate to us that the whole world of, uh, indemnification agreements has recently changed for, uh, LAFCOs. So if this ended up in a lawsuit, either us suing for failure to process our application or whatever the reason being, or Cal AM suing, um, the indemnification agreement that we've signed is not necessarily the same free pass it was before. So their budget of just over a million dollars does not include anything for litigation expenses other than the normal day-to-day payment of the person from the county council's office who's, you know, lent to their organization. So, um, I think there's some exposure there from that standpoint as well.
Okay, one more there, uh, Director Malik, and then we're gonna let somebody else in. Go ahead.
Um, do we know what LAFCO, um, authorized scope of work for this consultant? Is it free-for-all? They do whatever they want to do? And especially with general managers concerned that they are not experts in certain fields in question? What happens if they, if they get into that part that they don't know anything about? And they make rulings or determinations in their report that is not founded by, um, credible facts?
Yeah.
In other words, we do have concern about the consultant that LAFCO had hired or proposing to hire, and we are paying for that, but we have nothing to do to find out what they are charged to do.
I've, I've only gotten a little bit of it word of mouth that I've already, as best I can relate it to you. LAFCO did bring in interim staff, a gentleman named Bill Nicholson, who's done a lot of LAFCO work, um, around the state, to give them the staff help they need to manage this project, uh, because they've currently got a chief staffer who's on leave of absence. He was tasked with developing the scope of services and sending it out to three or four firms that they had identified, who I don't know the names of. I don't know who they sent it to, and I never saw their scope of services. I had hoped to find it on their website. I did not. Um, I can make an inquiry to, to get it, to see it. Um, but I've told you about all they've given up to me so far.
One more.
Go ahead.
Since we are paying for it, don't we have the right to know what the scope of their work is?
I don't know. I think General Counsel has said no, but.
Okay, Dan.
I, I believe you can ask to see the scope of work before you make the payment.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair, and then, uh, Director Rowley.
I, I'd like to make a comment that I think goes to, to some of, uh, Director Malik's questions. There's a lot in the feasibility study that the district had done in 2019 that are facts beyond dispute that are already established. So for example, uh, the valuation of all the, uh, capital assets used to provide service in, in, within the district area, that's all on record with the CPUC. It's a part of the public record. Uh, the, the capital assets constitute the rate base of Cal AM. That's all basically in the record of the CPUC, Cal AM's rate cases and application proceedings, a certain, uh, the valuation of those assets, rate of return, same thing with revenue require, historical revenue requirements, and those are periodically determined in the rate cases. So that's all a matter of record. Um, there's, it, those things are, are facts. I was reminded of this sort of obvious fact when I, I, before this meeting, I reread the, the executive summary of the fees of the district's feasibility study, which by the way is only five or six pages. So I mean, anyone could just read the executive summary, get the most important part. And, um, I was reminded, looking at our study, that, that the consultants used those facts that are established. This is the rate base, you know, this is a revenue requirement for the X number of years. The, the, these things are, are valued, uh, it's, it's a matter of record. So no consultant has to dig very far to, to get that information. It's not, it's not gonna be a matter of dispute.
All right, Director Rapp.
Um, yeah, a little spin-off of that. Uh, it seemed to me that the LAFCO Commission discussion, when I was listening in, uh, acknowledged the fact that Cal AM has no responsibility to relea- re- re- uh, reveal any new information. My, I have got, I kind of have two questions. One is, has Cal AM's claimed, um, appraisal been made public in any way? Uh, that's, that's one question. The other, the other question is, if this is a one-sided dimension to, and goes back to, uh, Mal, uh, Sefat's question about the scope of service, if this is a one-sided, uh, review of our data only, uh, are we at some sort of disadvantage based on the answer to my first question? Is Cal AM required to reveal any information? It's a question to, I don't know who.
Well, yeah, it's one-sided from that standpoint. And, uh, and to Director Paul's point, even the data that our folks accessed was not easy to find. So even, and, and not always consistent. Uh, what you see in rate cases sometimes does not line up with what you see in an annual report filing, uh, both with the Public Utilities Commission. Um, some places, all of the assets are aggregated up into rate base, but not cleanly, uh, identified. So the, the knowledge of how to, uh, kind of work your way through a public utilities commission, of which, you know, there's, there's probably fifty of them. I know that, you know, they don't, maybe not every state, but there should be. Um, it's pretty arcane knowledge. So our team has pieced together the best snapshot of what Cal AM looks like without having any access to Cal AM data. And no third-party reviewer is gonna get access to it. Um, you can imagine that their appraisal, uh, team, and they, they have two appraisers they tend to use nationwide. They do it, they have access to the Cal AM data. Um, so this person or this consultant will have the opportunity to read that. Uh, it is public in that the summary of the appraisal was published publicly. And I think a lot of us got that back in, you know, October of 2018. But the several, I don't think it's over a hundred pages, but there's a, uh, a significant number of supporting pages that, uh, they've now made available to LAFCO, which as a public agency means it's public. I just don't know that it's published on it in an easily findable manner.
But, General Manager, the appraisal that we done was a drive-by appraisal. We did not go into the plan or anything yet. Let's clarify to everybody that it was a drive, and all these other appraisal. Maybe Cal AM have an appraisal, but can we get a copy of that appraisal now?
Yeah, we have it.
Huh?
We, we do have it.
Oh, okay. So any information Cal AM gives, I think I heard you say, it's bec- it becomes public because it's going to a public agency, it's going to a public agency. So I mean, we can get our hands on it too.
Yeah, it's the, the detailed material in support of the MRV appraisal. So it's their consultant's background. It's not necessarily a hundred percent Cal AM generated.
That's what I understand. And Mr. Laredo?
Yes, sir.
Who can we appeal this to? Once LAFCO make a decision and we don't like it, who can we, uh, appeal to?
A LAFCO decision is, uh, can be contested before the Superior Court. The standard is going to be whether their LAFCO decision is supported by substantial evidence or not. I fear because LAFCO has made it clear that they feel they need this independent review, that if the district did not facilitate having the independent review, that LAFCO's decision could hang their hat on the fact that they did not have this review. And that would make it more difficult to challenge the LAFCO decision. I believe once this separate third-party review is there, that the district would have a much better position in challenging LAFCO if LAFCO did not, um, follow the substantial evidence that will be before it.
Okay. Thank you. That's what we want. Uh, Director Anderson.
Um, see if I can say this. If, because it's not LAFCO's actual job to, uh, do a, a cost analysis, that's not part of their, their tasks in this, until it gets to the judge and a jury, it really was, doesn't make a difference. Isn't that true?
I don't believe you can say that LAFCO, LAFCO is totally beyond its bounds by asking the questions it has asked.
Okay. Haven't I heard anything from Mayor Clyde? Any, any comments yet?
No, yeah, I, um, I, I think Southwatt has, uh, asked some really excellent questions. And I'm glad he did because it's an important discussion, and I think the answers have been good. Yeah, it's just one of those things. Do we have a choice? But we'll see.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for asking.
Vice Chair, you, you were raising your hand. Uh, okay, you all mute. You all mute.
I'd just like to say what I think we, we all know is that another independent study at this stage is not necessary. It's not gonna give us any useful information. It's not gonna give the LAFCO commissioners useful information that is not already available, in my opinion. Um, so it's very frustrating, um, to be in a position of having an authorized expenditure of money that ultimately comes from ratepayers and taxpayers on the Monterey Peninsula to do an unnecessary study. I find it very, I share your frustration completely. But I think we should, uh, go ahead and authorize the money, uh, to do this independent study because the LAFCO commissioners do have the discretion to ask for more information for the reason that Mr. Laredo has, has said. And that is that we will then be in a better position to say to LAFCO, okay, make a decision. And then we'll see what, if they don't make a decision, we can go to court. If they make a decision we don't like, we can go to court and we'll be in a, in a better position. If we have to do that, I hope we don't, but we may.
Okay, uh, let's open it up to the public. Joel, could you please open it up to the public on this item?
And then it comes back. All right. So if you would like to make a public comment on item number twelve point one, please raise your hand via Zoom, or if you're calling in, press star nine. So at this time, I'll go ahead and invite, Tom Rowley. Uh, let me go ahead and share my screen here. Directors, are you able to see the timer?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom, uh, when you're ready, please present your comment.
I just unmuted. Thank you very much, Joel. Uh, Tom Rowley, Vice President, Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association. Um, I'd hate to be the gentleman in this situation, especially if he does not have a team supporting him. Basically, I believe that the board has un- unexpected or unrealistic expectations of the value. And having attended the November meeting in, at, I believe it was at Embassy Suites, there was plenty of comment that the study that was done was not realistic, and the numbers presented for your study were, you know, really out to lunch. Uh, that's the only way to describe it. Um, then you have Cal AM, who has unrealistic expectations of what they believe their water system is worth. So, um, turning this over to an independent agency is probably a major benefit to your board, your directors, because what you've done in the past, you've had your own hired guns come up with a cost estimate. We know that the cost estimate for the Felton takeover was way off. We know that they tried to compare it with the other takeover that was up in, um, I believe it was in Idaho or Montana, was like nickels and dimes compared to the size of this system. So there's really nothing in comparison. So I think it will be a benefit in the long run between your board and Cal AM to have an independent looksee at this. I just, uh, it's, it's a challenging job, but I think it will be, pay off the benefit in the long run. We've been at this for how many years? Um, how many months? And let's face it, seventy thousand is nickels and dimes compared to what you guys have spent to date. So, um, that's my general comments, just in general, about what the benefits could be realized from getting an independent analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to invite Michael Bear. Uh, when you're ready, Michael, uh, please present your comment.
Good evening. The decision made by LAFCO was egregious, and it should be disputed. A little more about that in a minute. There are some things that are not in dispute, and they should be tended to with all expediency. This is the part where I get to skip because I understand you've done the real, the, uh, property tax valuation. So hopefully there is a good plan, mitigation for the two million dollars because, um, those, uh, important community stakeholders are relying on that income. And so I expect that the Water District has figured out a way to mitigate that expense because if you go to eminent domain and there's gonna be injury, that's not a good thing. Uh, number two that's not in dispute is that fifty-eight new ra- ratepayers, who are also important shareholders. And I, uh, you know, Mr. Laredo's comments earlier notwithstanding, I think it would be good to go ahead and plan and conduct the public hearings. Um, and, uh, get that done in good faith. You can alert the citizens, uh, what the dispute is, or, you know, the discussion that's going on today. Uh, uh, but now to the dispute in action, which is the third-party peer review. on today. But now to the dispute and action, which is the third-party peer review on evaluation. I fear a trap here. If you choose to go along to get along and pay the 50 to 70,000, there's no guarantee what that result will be. Harken back for a moment to 2016, when the so-called mayor's authority, authority hired a high geohydrological third-party review to quote bulletproof Cal Am's ERI, EIR at that time. They paid 80 grand for it. The company came back with findings that basically collaborated, corroborated Cal Am in the HWG, even though later scrutiny by the Coastal Commission identified several major hiccups, which has halted the project to this very day. What if the third-party peer review process in this case also found in favor of Cal Am? The district would then be in a very weakened and disadvantageous negotiating position. And because you agreed to the process, Lafco would be empowered to deny your request. So in conclusion, attend to the undisputed items, which you basically have, but I'd say go forward with the, with the public hearings and contest the peer review decision. And if Lafco has some internal appeal process, engage it. But when you finish all that, if the dispute is not resolved, the push towards litigation against Lafco in all earnestness at that time. There is no time to waste. And the kangaroo court of commissioners, because let's get real about what we saw last, last month. Those people are doing a political favor. They're not gonna answer the reason. They're not gonna reverse their position without a stick at least. So please do not approve the revenues. Please do not approve revenues for third-party review.
Okay. Time's up. Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I would like to invite Melody Chrislock. When you're ready, please present your comment.
Yes, I think you are doing the right thing by going ahead with the $70,000, whatever, 50, 70,000. I understand what David Laredo is saying, that it puts you in a better position if, in fact, and we hope this doesn't happen, you have to sue Lafco for one reason or another. I think it's, it's obvious, I think there's nothing else you can really do at this point. I wanted to make the facts about Felton. I wanted to repeat those for the public again. I saw a letter from Hoyer in the Herald, which got it all wrong. We worked with Felton. We know what the Felton facts are when we designed Measure J. So in the beginning, Cal Am said that their system was not for sale, but it was worth $46 million. They had bought it four years earlier for 2 million. So people got wind of that and said, what? 2 million? That was never an offer that Felton made, Cal Am. It was never, they never said that. What Felton did was go to the public because it was gonna be a bond and they had to, they had to set an amount. They said this will cost between 10 and 12 million dollars. That's what they told their voters. And it ended up costing 11 million. Cal Am later came back and I think it was appraised for 25 million, but it ended up costing 11 million. And then the San Lorenzo Valley Water District, they wanted something extra, so they threw in another 2 million. But I think this is very educational for how this works with Cal Am and their appraisals and their unrealistic pie in the sky kind of claims. So just for that. I'm also very concerned about Supervisor Alejo's connections to this, and he's obviously been driving this at Lafco. It turns out that he has taken money, campaign donations, $500 from Kevin Tilden, Cal Am's VP in 2018. And what's worse is $2,000 from Manette Phelps and Phillips' contribution to Alejo's 2014 campaign. And that is the law firm that George Sonif works for, who is arguing this case against the Water Management District in eminent domain. In any other world, this would seem like a really horrendous conflict of interest that Mr. Alejo is just basically doing a political favor for Cal Am here. It's very disturbing that this is occurring, and I don't know that there's any legal recourse, but I certainly think we should make it known. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I would like to invite Susan Skilvoni. Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Melody. I wanted to thank her for clarifying the Felton information because it was misstated earlier, and I'm happy that she brought that up. And it is an example of how Cal operates. And we all know that is, they've been doing this all along. So the histrionic lawyer they had at the meeting the last time was certainly trying to make points. And I agree with her that there's some things going on that are very irregular when you see with the, one of the supervisors has so many connections to this company. I'm very disappointed in Lafco's inability to do the work that they were supposed to do, to actually analyze this and go against their staff's expertise, and in a way insult the district's ability to have an objective evaluation done on something so important to the voters in this area. Why would they think that you would be lying? I mean, it's incredible to me that they would think that you had an evaluation done just to get what you want without any sense of responsibility to the public and your ratepayers. I'm appalled by their stance, but I realize the legal bind that you're in. It works well. You have someone who has been in the state legislature who's very experienced at pulling off these kinds of things. So this is one of the delay tactics and one of the ways that they're gonna make it more expensive that we are just gonna have to go through, I'm afraid. And I think you should go ahead and do this, unfortunately. But it does still leave the option later if you need to sue Lafco, and you will have a better record for clarity if you do have to go to court. And I agree with Mr. Laredo and also with Director Paul. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would like to invite Anna Thompson. So when you're ready, Anna, please present your comment.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I think it's a very difficult decision, but I don't, you don't have too much choice. We cannot give up at this point. So I, I think that the best thing to do is to go for the, to approve the money for the third-party evaluation. And I think that we definitely would have to pursue it if it turns out that it's, they're not gonna do a good job for us and we can't be able to contest it at that point. But we have to move as fast as we can because Cal Am, that's why we wanna purchase Cal Am is because of all those impediments that they put in creating the right management and, and the right policies for our community. And that's the type of things that we're suffering from is because it's in the hands of a monopoly. So thank you. Please go ahead and approve it and let's pursue it all the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, at this time, I'd like to invite the phone number ending in 312. For the person that's calling in, you may identify yourself for the record. So go ahead and push star six, and that should allow you to make your public comment.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Joel. Margaret Ann Coperola speaking. I already submitted some comments in writing, but I, I wanted to just reassure you that we applaud you and support you. You've done a brilliant job. Your questions tonight are so thorough in, in evaluating the situation. And I think David Laredo gives really great advice, and I concur with my fellow citizens on the comments that they've made. So I think you've done such an outstanding job and have incredible courage and long suffering in this whole process. But I do want to mention that I'm very concerned about how much weight is being given to the voice of the citizens in Measure J. It seems like our voice is being drowned out by Cal Am attorneys and supporters. So I have a serious concern about the conflict of interest of some of the commissioners on Lafco, because it's been brought out from some research that has been done, that there are some serious conflicts of interest there. And so that does concern me that those conflicts of interest are having a louder voice than the voice of the citizens on Measure J. So I want to thank all of you for the hard work that you've done. You've been sweating bullets there, and, you know, we admire you and thank you so much for speaking up on our behalf. So God bless you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Tynan. When you're ready, please present your comment.
Somebody on mute.
Hi, James Eric Tynan. I just, one positive note I'd say is that your general manager is one of the smartest, most respected general managers anywhere I know. I'm sure you did as good a job as you can do getting the first evaluation done. That being said, the difference is so great that it sounds like for 70,000 for your ratepayers, it's a good thing to have it looked at one more time to validate his numbers. Pretty simple if they're right. It should be detailed. I don't think Lafco's commissioners have this big agenda, this big plot going on. Like yourselves, they're public officials and they seem to be open to that kind of criticism anytime someone doesn't like their decision. But I think, my personal opinion, that for that much money, validates Dave's numbers or district's numbers, then it's a good thing. And that way, something goes south down the road. You say, hey, look, we did the second evaluation. Everything, we did everything we're supposed to and more. So I think you're on the right track. You've got a great staff, and I wish you well in the future. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would like to invite Marley Mountain. Marley, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Well, I would certainly like to compliment everyone on the board for the careful discussion you've had of this and sympathize with you on the position that Lafco has put you in. It does seem that there is unnecessary bias on the part of Lafco against the district. I'm disappointed that we all, as ratepayers, have to pay this extra cost when it does not seem necessary. However, I will bow to the greater wisdom of the Attorney Laredo and recommend that you go ahead and approve it. I would like to ask you to, especially the district staff, to make sure that you provide clear explanations all along the way to Lafco members who may not have a technical background, to make it easier for them to understand the excellence of the work that the district has already submitted. It seemed clear that they had not read, or maybe they didn't even try to read what you, what you put forth in your application. And I'd also ask you to document if you offered to provide additional information to the consultant that they've hired, and the consultant seems to turn you away, or not pay any attention to you, or to have a predetermined agenda to do something quite unexpected or possibly expected in this case, since Lafco seems to be so easily swayed by Cal Am. And so that you are laying good groundwork for an appeal should you need to take this to court. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair Edwards, I didn't, oh. I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed on this item. All right, boy. Any other question? Go ahead, Director Rowley.
I just want to respond to a couple of comments that were made by the speakers. The negotiations over price, whether it was in Felton, or Missoula, or somewhere in Southern California, I can't remember what it, what it was. I think it was Golden State, but not Cal Am. All of those negotiations took place after the Lafco, I mean, I don't know if there's a Lafco in Monterey, in, in Montana, but in California there is. And those discussions took place after the process got them to court. So my point is, and this is Tom Rowley's point as well, if you need to be in court in order to find the actual value that you're dealing with, you need to get to court. You don't need to, you need to prove anything to Lafco. So I'm, I'm, I'm just all in favor of what we need to do to get through Lafco because the real discussion takes place in court after Lafco, not before Lafco, but after Lafco. And we need to get there. And so I'm gonna be supporting the motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, yes. Again, I always appreciate public comment. The whole idea of a public hearing is we as elected officials, including Lafco, who aren't elected to the board, but they are appointed, but they're ultimately elected officials, are supposed to go into a public hearing without having a decision made ahead of time, unlike the partisanship that we see in DC. And so the question was raised by one speaker, would the study really make any difference? Would it really change anyone's mind? And I honestly can't answer that. And so that, that is to me a really important question. Then the second part is, is, and I doubt this can happen, is there any way to ask Lafco to pre-commit that if the district's figures are corroborated, they will grant latent powers? I know the, I, I'm loving our attorney going, yeah, good try, Mayor. But I would just hate to see, we're gonna do a study, it comes in and they'll say, oh, thanks very much. No, we're not gonna grant your latent powers. Is this gonna change anyone's mind? I don't know the answer to that. But that, that's, that's kind of the core of the issue.
Sir, Chair, may I respond to that?
Go ahead then, Mr. Laredo.
This is going to be a, an evidentiary proceeding before Lafco. Lafco would be making an egregious error if they pre-committed. They have to go in with an open mind, no bias. They have to make their decision based upon the facts in the record. The record has not even been opened yet. They, they cannot make a commitment at this time. They can only do that after the hearing is closed, and they must make a decision based upon the facts in the record before them.
With all due respect to Mr. Laredo, I agree. On the other hand, did they do that at their last hearing?
They had not had a hearing. They had not had a hearing. They, they had a workshop.
Right. Well, my point is, did the workshop indicate that or not? That's rhetorical.
Understood.
All right, let's get down to it. Anyone else here? Go ahead, Director Malik.
How long is the study supposed to take?
No more than eight weeks.
With no extensions?
No, and that's where not having the scope of services hurts a little bit of this discussion. I think the 50,000 is to get through a date certain, which might be the hearing and the contingencies to cover additional needs identified by the consultant or additional deliberations that would require more consultant approval. I don't have that information. I will work on getting that information. I note that the consultant is listening to all of this so he knows what questions I'm gonna call him about at some point. But I will, going through Kate McKenna, Executive Director of Lafco.
Are you able to have direct contact with the consultant?
At some point, when, whenever they say go, and whenever he or his team are ready to start asking questions, it's been strongly encouraged to do so.
Can the board make a? Can the board make a, um, uh, an approval subject to the board's approval of the scope of work?
Mr. Laredo, can we do that?
While you could do that, I believe the timing would be delayed and I fear that all that will do is extend this. Uh, I doubt that the, uh, LAFCO would receive that favorably as a condition on your payment.
Yeah, I think it just puts you in the same place we're at today, which is they've said, hey, we've got this, but you're going to pay for it.
Any other? All right, let's get down to it. I need a motion, I need a second. Go ahead, Director Rowley.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the staff recommendation for 50 to start and 70 max, uh, at this point for LAFCO to study, study.
Okay, we have a motion. What? Our second vice chair spoke up. Discussion time. Anyone I'd like to discuss it before I start?
Yes, can you?
Okay, go ahead, Director Malik.
Can you make a condition of approving the, um, the scope of the consultant's work?
Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not open, I'm not open to a modification, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Thanks. I just want to really applaud everyone for the kind of discussion that we've had. I think it's necessary for us to be able to air our concerns. I think it's important for the public to hear the concerns that we have. I completely concur with the motion and with the second to move forward with this. Um, and I think had we not had the kind of robust comments that we've had from everybody, from, uh, throughout the community and of course within the board, it would not be as thoughtful a, uh, decision as we're showing that it is. And I completely believe that this will be very helpful to us as we build the case that we, um, that we need to do. So I'm very thankful that we've come to this conclusion. Thank you. Well, I guess we'll vote first.
We close. Okay, any other comments before I make mine? Okay, I'm going to vote no on this one. Uh, we did everything that we supposed to do. We gave an estimate of the cost of the service we're about to provide. We did that in our report. We've been using our latent powers. And on a small schedule. But we've been using our latent powers. We got all the documentation in for the 58 parcels to add them into the district. All that documentation has been in. You know, going, going this, this third party, it may help us, but I think it's going to hurt us in the long run. And I, 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 I don't know. But I, I, I feel that the politics in this has gone too far. I listened to Director Malik and he had good questions. I listened to all you. But on this one, it's a no because of that $70,000. If those commissioners would have did their homework, listened to their staff, give us questions during that study session or whatever they call that. We could have came up with, they could have had that hearing scheduled by now. Because that's what we've been doing. All this extra stuff that we are doing right now is hurting the ratepayers, is slowing the district down. Commissioners, all of them got to do their homework. One commissioner, I, I was really surprised at Mayor Oglesby because he spoke the truth. He brought it all out. You won't get the answers you need until you go to court. And I commend Mayor, Mayor Oglesby for doing that. Because he was exactly right and they did not listen to him. Five of them then, the other two, they voted the right way on this. So I, I, I'm going to hold LAFCO to making sure that report is being done and they get it done. I commend you for letting it get done. The board, I commend you. I commend you, but I'm purely against that $70,000. If they did their homework, we wouldn't be here today. And they listened to their staff, we wouldn't be here today doing this. And I want to thank the board for letting us get it on the agenda as fast as we did. So General Manager, General Counsel, please tell them we want action. Don't let them hum and haw over it. Those 90 days should have been started. So that's, that's all I got to say and we're going, uh, call for the vote now.
Director Malik?
No.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
No.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
And Chair Edwards?
No.
Uh, Director Roberson, your vote was?
No.
4-3, Jeff Doyle. Pass.
All right.
Get, get, make it official.
Yeah, so the motion passes on a vote of 4 to 3.
Thank you, thank you all. Okay, next item.
Hey, we will try to make this short. But I'm going to share a screen with you here. So this is, uh, just discussion, both the items 13 and 14 are discussion. This is about redistricting. Um, there will be some information in here for you board members as well as for the public. So what is redistricting? It applies to all jurisdictions that elect members by district or division. It's based on revised census data every 10 years. And its primary goal is to balance populations in each voter division. However, there are three legal requirements. One is population equality between the divisions. And the idea is the difference between the largest and the smallest division should not exceed 10% of the ideal population size of a division. Need to be compliant with the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965 and frankly, also the California Voting Rights Act of 2001, federal and state constitution and the California elections codes. One of the key things here embedded in the Voting Rights Act is that changes must not be regret, retrogressive. And to the extent possible, you maintain voting strength of minority groups as it exists in the divisions. And any changes need to be pre-cleared by the US Department of Justice. The third legal requirement is, uh, an attempt to maintain communities of interest. Now, while the 14th Amendment prohibits use of race in the predominant criterion, there needs to be a broad focus on communities of interest, uh, of, of either affiliation, uh, or, uh, common interest, common goals. And that could be, uh, a variety of things to talk about. So here are the existing divisions. They're all approximately, oh, anywhere from 20,232 to 22,148, um, based on the 2010 census numbers. This is an example of what the demographers look at, uh, with respect to communities of interest. This is ethnicity, where you can see back in the 2010 data, uh, they defined by, uh, color and concentration, uh, different ethnicities, uh, as a measure to, to see if you're, uh, inadvertently moving a boundary to, uh, sever a community. Here's an example on age, where, uh, turns out Pebble Beach and a lot of the valley, average age is over 50. Um, interestingly, Seaside, clearly as median, it's skewed very likely, we think, by some CSUMV, uh, data, but, you know, it says the estimated median age in Seaside back then was under 30. They'll also look at income. This is estimated median household income. Um, and then here's just one more, uh, no, that was the only other, other example. There's maybe three or four other examples that demographers can look at. So our plan for the process, we've contracted with LAPC and GOBAE, um, domestic, uh, demographic research. They, uh, performed the district's work, uh, in 2010 as well as in 1990. Um, so they've been at it for a while. Um, presently, before the official census data is made available, they are supposed to be working on, uh, database prep from other sourced databases, um, preparing the GIS mapping layers and, uh, making sure the current district divisions are mapped in GIS. Then October comes along, the official data is to be received. It'll get loaded into the database and they'll make kind of a, a three-level determination. Um, two of those levels are deemed minor, which could be no boundary adjustments are required, very minor boundary adjustments are required, um, or major boundary adjustments are required due to shifting populations. If they're major, then at that time, we would ask the board to consider forming a redistricting advisory committee. You may have been seeing ads from the county already trying to put together a redistricting advisory committee. Um, you know, it's, it's not a small task to take on. Um, we don't foresee the need for it unless there's going to be major boundary line adjustments. Um, so we're going to wait until that time. If it is, uh, directed that we would want to do so, then we'd spend December approximately through March doing the, uh, advisory committee meetings, putting up options, having a hearing on an ordinance to adopt a plan and then a resolution to adopt the final plan. Uh, the deadline for any of this action is May 12th, so that it is applicable to the next, uh, countywide elections. So with that, any questions or other topics? That's, that's kind of what we'll be doing. We have had inquiries from, uh, to date only the League of Women Voters with a volunteer to, uh, be part of any citizens panel. And I've advised that organization to, to hold on and wait and see what's indicated by the data.
Okay, any board questions? Go ahead, Director Malik.
He is, he said May 12th, May 12th of which year?
Of '22.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair, and then George Brown.
Uh, if we do need a, um, advisory committee, who, who besides the League of Women Voters, uh, I mean, we would be asking for members of the public to, to serve as volunteers, is that right?
Yes, yes, we would. And we, we would look to, uh, preferably, community organizations who have, uh, some sort of affiliation with the key issues. So if it's, uh, ethnic or economic or, you know, putting a dividing line down, uh, the, the middle of, uh, two blocks in a housing project or something like that, um, we'd reach out to the likely affected parties.
Thank you.
All right, Director Rowley. Um, wha- what's your guess of the timing of the consultant getting some perspective on what the need may be?
Well, and I, I'll be honest, I need to check back in with them to see how much of the pre-data work they're making progress on. Because then it would just be, uh, and I'm not sure how the census data is delivered, if it's a comma delimited, delimited file that they can easily input to their database or if it takes a little bit more than that. So I'll get you an answer for that, but I, I was giving them at least a month to six weeks to come up with, uh, some preliminary conclusions as to need, you know, what needs to be done.
So, so, so you're looking at maybe September, we will get a report that has some substance to it?
No, I, I don't think we'll see anything with substance until November, uh, timeframe. You know, they have to receive the, the census data and it's, you know, it's been delayed due to COVID. The current date is this October timeframe. If they got it out earlier, then yeah, we rushed to go to town. But, um, I don't see anything of substance until, you know, late October, early November.
Okay.
And, and we're talking about only the districts within the Monterey Water Management District?
Right. The, yeah, the five voter divisions. We have a separate project that we have not hired them for or even asked for a quote on, which relates a little bit to potential outcomes with, uh, LAFCO, Measure J and adjustments between our boundary and Marina Coast boundary at some point in time, which would affect all the voter divisions because we would be, uh, releasing a piece of Division 1 and then rebalancing all the remaining divisions. Um, but that's, that's down the road once we've got a better indication of, uh, what's going on with the acquisition.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If none, uh, General Counsel, do we have to ask this one out to the public?
Yes, you do, and I believe you have one member of the public that wants to comment.
Okay.
All right, at this time, I would like to invite, uh, Tom Rowley. Tom, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Yes, uh, good evening again. Um, I'm probably the only person that participated in the two committee meetings from the 1990 census and the 2000 census. Um, and we were appointed, uh, myself and Carlos Quintana from the city of Monterey. I don't know whether Clyde, uh, Mayor Clyde would recall this, but it was a very efficient process. The cities appointed the, the members of the committee. I believe there were about 10 or 12 people on, on the committee, I'm not sure who chaired it. I don't know whether you have a record of how, how it was, uh, organized, but we met over about, we, I think we met once a week for about a month and we came up with a recommendation. I think I mentioned once before that we came up with, it, it, basically the existing boundaries. No changes were made, uh, after the 2000 census. And then you didn't have a, you didn't have a committee meet after the 2010 census. And, uh, the original thing was to have the ex officio members be non-voting, which was turned down by the board. So that's why the mayor and the supervisor still get a vote in addition to the five divisions we came up with. Uh, I caution you that, uh, the nice two, uh, overhead views that you have of your maps do not follow the contours and the, quote, "communities of interest." So we really made quite fairly substantial changes the very first year. But there have been significant population changes. And however you decide to, uh, select, whether you have each director select somebody or whatever, um, it helped to have somebody completely off the wall. It was not connected with the Water Management District, the two committees that I served on. So it was a pleasure to serve and I think the fact that no changes basically have been made since the original committee after the 1990 census shows that we did a good job. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you know others with their hands raised, I'll go ahead and return this to the board.
Thank you. Uh, next item, Jim.
Yeah, on that last item, I just want to point out that the district has 58, uh, census tracts that are not completely in the district. So the demographers have to make certain assumptions about who's in and who's out. Um, but you'll see all that in the eventual report. Okay, last item, except for a couple of questions I'm going to have for you before you leave. What did I just do? There we go. Uh, this is just about post-COVID-19 reopening. Um, I guess the first oxymoron is post-COVID-19. Um, because apparently we're not, and, uh, I'll tell you what I mean in just a second. So what we've done to date, we reopened the customer service window and the front doors on July 6th. Uh, we began a vaccination self-certification, uh, program July 16th. So that was just last week, might actually have been the 15th. Um, so those are certifications are just starting to come in. Um, so those are certifications are just starting to come in. We've expected to return fully, uh, with a target of mid-August, August sixteenth is a Monday. And that's gonna depend on the direction of the county's numbers. Uh, we will allow a hybrid work model, uh, for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at the discretion of the division managers. But we, um, when we were under executive order, it was quite easy to do if it's discretionary on the district's policy. We have to either, uh, well, first, we need to define what that policy is and clarify for sure whether it needs to be bargained with the, uh, labor units. And then, uh, board and committee meetings are to remain remote for the near future, uh, primarily due to distancing and technology issues, which I'll talk about in just a second. Uh, this is an example of some signage we have in the district lobby. Um, our requirements are that you must, must wear a mask, only two customers in the lobby at any point in time. And we shortened the window hours to nine to four, uh, both to, uh, eliminate the hectic, uh, first arrivals and late arrivals. We're getting two, you could have four, you could have six. We also have to have our employees kind of close out their work for the day. So hopefully these hours of work, we haven't seen a whole lot of business, if you will, in the two weeks we've been open. And then there came today, um, Monterey County and San Bernardino County, uh, joined with the Bay Area counties just today to recommend that everyone wear a mask indoors in public spaces, which will cover our own public spaces. Uh, one of the primary concerns we have is if the everyone wears, wears a mask mandate continues, um, at the state or, uh, county level for the entire workplace, that that may, uh, change our plans. So knowns for us are Cal OSHA keeps changing. Uh, I don't know if you followed some of their, uh, proclamations, but uh, they've been stable for a couple of weeks now. The county numbers are rising primarily, uh, with respect to the Delta variant. Um, and this is what I mentioned before, a hundred percent indoor mask mandate would likely send us back to work from home. Um, because it's just very challenging for, even though, you know, I guess the fast food workers have figured it out and some of the field staff have figured it out, but trying to get people to sit for an entire workday with a mask on, uh, is a bit of a challenge. And then the conference room, the reason I, I said that, you know, we could adopt technology and we could be doing two things at once. But the room is simply not big enough to accommodate the public and the board at a social distance. Um, going to a hybrid model with, um, the Owl camera or something else would require an additional staffer with full attention on that. And we're getting really great public participation in our Zoom meetings right now. Um, I would prefer us to have a little more collegiality in being together. But until these numbers change and there's really a clear green light, um, my direction has been not to overcomplicate things that will continue with this format that we've been doing with Zoom and, uh, and continued public participation. And without any questions, uh, I'm happy to take them.
Uh, Vice Chair?
Does the indoor mask mandate apply to people who are working alone in an office?
No. Well, so now you go to Cal OSHA and employees teleworking from a location of the employer's choice, which is not under the control of the employee, I'm sorry, location of the employee's choice, not under control of the employer, uh, is affected differently than the vice versa. So, but the, the short answer is no, um, as of right now. If you're working alone, our situation in the building is we may feel like we're working alone, but we really have only four active, maybe five active air handlers. So there are sections or pods of the building that are sharing the air. So people have been pretty diligent about opening windows and trying to create crossflows and things like that, but, um, you may feel like you're alone in your office with no mask, but you're actually circulating air among five or six offices, spaces. You know, we're trying to figure that one out.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, it, it really isn't a mandate, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, a, a public space of both vaccinated and unvaccinated, right.
Correct. And then in addition to that, my understanding, at least at this point, is that it's up to the individual employer or business donor, whether they want to enforce the, um, the mask, uh, recommendation at this point.
Okay, uh, General Counsel, um, the question I got is, um, the governor about the leftist emergency in September. Okay, I, I know our, our committee means we can still do them video, what way we've been doing it. But on public meetings, do we have to go back to full public meetings, or can we do a hybrid public meeting?
I have not researched that in detail. I do know that every public agency with which I'm, uh, associated is planning at most doing a hybrid. I don't know of any public agency that is, uh, uh, not going to at least do a hybrid. And some are wanting to set, uh, maintain separate, uh, uh, meeting locations. So, but my sense is that I'll be better able to answer that question in, in a few weeks.
Okay, and, uh, to the GM, I think we need to look at that. I don't care if the public stay at home. I don't care if three directors or four directors stay at home, um, to, to do this, but we need to start really looking at it and see how things work out. So for the, for our regular scheduled meetings. Cause I think in September, um, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah, I'm taking a look at a camera device tomorrow called the Owl, which, uh, you know, I'm, I'm just worried about, you know, Joel's like, with Sarah, they're, they're both engaged right now in a, in the single setup with Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
And the question is, if we go to some hybrid, do we have enough bandwidth to stay on top of everything in person? You know, it's basically having an in-person meeting with a Zoom meeting and, you know, so we'll talk about that internally.
Yeah, and I, I like to find out if it's gonna work or if it's not gonna work. So, so we can tell the governor or whoever that's coming up with this stuff. Okay, any other questions?
No, just a comment, uh, our city council has had hybrid meetings, our last three meetings. And we also have ANT, which, um, broadcasts for us. And our first meeting, we had some snafus, but the, the last two have been successful. We've had minimal, if one or two, uh, public members who actually attended live at our council chambers. And are, actually, it's interesting, our Zoom public, uh, comments have declined a little bit in the last six weeks too. I don't know if that's the hybrid or maybe we're just boring. I don't know what it is. Probably the latter. But it's, uh, it's, it's a little awkward, to be honest with you, because three of our council members do have come live, uh, two are at home, they're able to interact, but I can't see them until they're on camera, because we don't have this kind of, uh, display, a gallery, if I'm in the council chamber. So it is awkward, but it does work.
Thank you. And I've been attending Seaside and they've been doing it both ways, but you can't see them out there, but you can hear them. So.
Yes.
We also are hybrid right now. Three of us are, are there and two are not.
Oh, okay.
All right. So any other questions? If not, what you got next, GM?
Well, just about ready to wrap it, but I've got two, um, items that I just wanted to call, um, so we're gonna need another closed session. We did, um, discuss the water purchase agreement today. Um, and I guess my question goes to, uh, Director Adams, uh, do you have supervisory meetings on Tuesday tomorrow?
Yes, we are meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm chairing tomorrow, so I, I got to do this.
Yep, so I'll send around some suggested dates beginning Wednesday, but we'd like to, like to wrap this up this week, if we can wrap it up. Um, you know, there's a couple of things we definitely need to talk about. And the second is, um, I sent out an email regarding, uh, facilities, field trip, uh, Sleepy Hollow and so forth. And Mr. Chair and Mr. Malik, you are delinquent in giving us your choices. So if you could.
I wanna go.
And by the way, you, you do not have to go, you can take a pass. Some of your colleagues have already expressed an interest in taking a pass. Um, what I'm seeing on the dates that are available, we might only be able to do one of the two, uh, attempted trips, um, and I think that would be Sleepy Hollow while Fisher's still in there. Um, and then we'll have to do this exercise again to get you out to, uh, Aqua Storage and Recovery in Pure Water, but if those two directors could respond to me tomorrow or the next day.
I'll respond right now. Just put me down on a date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same here.
That's fine. So we'll pick a date based on everyone else, and if it works for you, um, we'll just go from there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, everybody. Have a great evening.
That is, thank you, board. Have a great evening. Talk to y'all later.
Chair Edwards.
Yeah.
Chair Edwards. Uh, we still have informational items.
Oh, okay. Do anybody wanna pull anything from this informational items? All right, I don't hear anybody, so that's it.
Thanks for keeping us honest, you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.